Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Breckins?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Here.
And Mayor McKay?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Before we stand and do the pledge, I'm gonna ask everybody to remain standing for a moment to honor the innocent victims that were killed last week in the shootings at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland. So, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment? Do you have any?
I have not received cards, ma'am.
Yeah, we did go real quick before.
Before you give out the signature of the students, can you make a comment?
Go right ahead, Dee.
Okay. The town administrator, the town clerk, was asked to put a letter together to send off to the different cities that this affected. And I would like Andy to read it that we sent out. It was also released today. As soon as I heard that this had happened up there, my first question, because of being so involved with the schools and the kids, was where was the resource officer? Never, never was addressed until today. He resigned. He quit. He was fired. Do you all know where he is? Because Barrio County State Board, the state, the federal government, I want you to know, he was not in the building. He never went in. Wow. So, put your kids in school because it's a safe haven? This is now very questionable. I had no idea what's gonna happen. They're still investigating why he did not go in. Could the man have been totally scared? That's possible. You know, when something like this happens, you never know how you're gonna react. But his job was to be there for those kids. And if they're in, you let them down. And I find that totally inexcusable. And, my lady, would you like to read?
Sure, thank you, councilmember. These letters were sent, two different copies were sent, one to the mayor and city commissioner in Parkland, the other to the mayor and city commissioner in Coral Springs. So, dear honor of the mayor, on behalf of our town council, residents, and staff, I write to send our love, support, and condolences to you and your community as you seek to recover from this horrific tragedy. We, like the rest of the nation, were shocked and appalled to learn about the senseless tragedy that took the innocent lives of seventeen people from the Parkland community. In the face of such a tragedy, we in Broward County stand as one community. What hurts one of us hurts all of us. These senseless acts cannot continue. While we are encouraged that the public outcry, especially from the younger generation and media attention, will generate some change, we must not stand idly by. We must all show the leadership that we were elected for and urge greater security to protect our children. Please keep us informed of any resolutions you pass or actions taken so that we will lend our voice and support in effect this much needed change. We grieve for you and pray that your community heals and grows stronger. We are here for you. If we can assist in any way, please let us know. And that went out over the mayor's signature. Just wanted to share that with you all.
Okay.
All right. Good?
Good.
Okay. Anybody else have any input on that or whatever? Okay, no, any public speakers yet? Seen the public how many board reports? Wow. Maybe quick meeting. No board reports. Councilmember comments?
Yeah, I'll go.
All right, good.
Thank you. And thank everybody for coming. Just a couple of brief announcements that are coming into play here towards the tail end of this month and in March. We have the Chili Cook-Off this Saturday at the Equestrian Park from twelve to four. Always a good event. Come and judge. It should be interesting this year. So, I hope everybody attends. We have Water Matters Day on the tenth, Saturday, nine to three at Tree Tops Park. You have park admission, but that's really the only thing you have. And it's a wonderful event to take the kids to because it really emphasizes the importance of the environment out here in South Florida. And then we have the annual, ninth annual, Rolling Oaks Easter Egg Hunt, put on by Rolling Oaks, on the twenty-fourth, March twenty-fourth, from twelve noon. Twelve noon starts with the little, the babies, zero to three-year-olds. There'll be a continental-type breakfast, a light breakfast served prior to that, from eleven to noon, so, in the barn. So, I urge everybody to come by. There's rumors that the Easter Bunny may show up. A few things like that. So, you know, so it'd be worthwhile. If you have any kids, children, please come. Thank you. And then, that's all I've got.
Awesome. Dee, what do you have next?
Um, just a couple of things I'd like to say. At our last meeting, I was not here, but prior to that, we had talked about the guardrails and had gone in and the contract had been aborted. I was okay with the price. It was good and fair. However, I would like to encourage our staff and everybody, when we get a real low amount of bids, to really get out there and try to get us a lot more. I think it would be behooves to the town, as well as to the residents, to get as many bids as we possibly can because we've limited ourselves on that. Also, we are here for all of this. So, when you hear of, when we hear of a complaint and we don't get a name or anything that goes with it, I can't really act on it. I can't talk to my town administrator about it. I can't talk to legal about it because I really don't know. So, if you have complaints, that's what all of us are up here for, to make sure that it gets to the right place and the right person. And if you feel more comfortable calling town hall, well, we paid your money. Andy is there. He'll take the punch of it. But he will make sure it gets to where it needs to be and you will get the correct information. So, to go out there and try to tell somebody it's this, this, and this, you could be causing more problems than what is really necessary. Um, I think that's it.
What about Tallahassee?
Oh, oh, one of the most important things. I did get the honor of attending Tallahassee again. It was fun as usual, except Mike and I were sick as dogs. But I did manage to mosey around and I feel that our presence there really is binding and makes everything good. They're really on this, this stuff we really need. The monies that were given to us for the, um, I'm getting ready, for the drainage, for the drainage project, you know, let them know that we needed this money. And it got taken care of. And hopefully, again, this year, we put in a couple of things. We got to see certain people and discuss it and hopefully, we can come back with big checks for you and take care of other things that you would like to see accomplished. So, I had fun. Doug and I had fun. And hopefully, we can get more of these on board to go up there because if nothing else, the Bowers rode across the street. And, uh, yeah, that was fun. But, uh, yeah, I think that's it. That's, I don't know, just the, oh, the astronaut thing. I forgot that. Uh, the Chili Cook-Off. Um, I, as well as some others, are in this, the Chili Cook-Off, okay? And, uh, it's not too late to sign up. Doesn't matter if you're staffing up, you can sign up for this. The more people, the better it's going to be. And it's going to be fun. So, I'd like to see everybody come out and really support this because this takes care of a lot in our parks. So, that's it. Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you. Um, just a couple of, a couple of things, I think, quick. I did want to just offer my best wishes. We had an equestrian rider that was seriously injured in the last week, thrown from a horse. And, um, serious head injury. And we just, just wish, wish her the best and, uh, and a speedy recovery. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, just a quick shout-out for Water Matters, one of my favorite events. If you have not been there, please check it out. It's a good one and we always, December, and the volunteers and the nurseries that volunteer and donate their plants for the day, is all very much appreciated.
Steve, let me run through, you may want to explain to them about getting the cards going gets, they have getting free plants.
Well, you know, being the frugal, I'll go with frugal. Can I go with frugal? Is that all right?
Sure.
Being the frugal person that I am, I always enjoy it also because, you know, you go there, if you have not been there, I really seriously-
You gotta go.
You gotta go? You gotta go? Because you go around to all the different booths and a lot of them are put on by school organizations. You get to talk to the kids. A lot of them are put on municipalities, the county, um, different vendors, a lot of different folks, but pretty much every one of them is educational in one way or the other. And so, you go around to the different booths, you get your, your card stamped by each one, and I think it's like twenty stamps you get done. And then you take that to, uh, to the last booth on the end and you get to turn in your card and you get a couple of free trees and bushes. So, so it's a, it's a wonderful event. I, I literally, um, being the frugal person that I am, the, I literally have the majority of my trees in my backyard are from Water Matters. I have some of what I personally believe are some of the most beautiful cypress trees I've ever seen in my life. And they started out as just little twigs about fifteen, sixteen years ago, and now they are massive, beautiful cypress trees in the backyard. So, I encourage you to go. There, it does, it's, it's good education, it's good supporting the town, and it's a great way to kind of popularize-
It's an amazing event.
Yeah, Florida native trees. Uh, the last thing that I wanted to touch on was, um, there is a resolution that was put forth by Tamarack that I think that we should back up and, and kind of work with. And that has to do with the pickup hurricane for the private roads, you know? And, um, that certainly is something that affected us this past, past hurricane season where we could not respond to the private roads as fast as we would have liked. And, um, this would kind of eliminate that distinction if we can get that passed. So, Andy, I'd like to propose that we move on that.
Next meeting?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you.
Schroeder?
Yeah, not much. Only thing that I'd ask you just make, talk a little bit about this gun thing. I've been a gun man all my life. I've been a hunter all my life. I use guns a lot. Uh, and I, for one, would support anything you have. You do away with this rapid-fire rifle, rapid-fire gun. I, I, you know, you can still do it with a pistol, they're very pretty, but just to have a rapid-fire rifle, I don't think it's necessary. You know, I found out as a hunter, I use a bowdach and rifle. I've used it all my life. Because you take no time if you've got one bullet to use that weapon. So, that's the reason I've always used that. I don't really see any necessity, even for a hunter to have a rapid-fire rifle. Thank you.
All right. That's, uh, that's good. I think, I think most of us would be on board with letting it to the rapid-fire buttstock, that kind of thing, or making any of the weapons for the automatic type of thing. But we put in that letter from, for Parkland and whatnot, and neighbors up there, that anything that they look forward to bring forward to, uh, you know, inform us of what that is. So, but I'm pretty sure that I'm on board with kind of what you're saying, just a matter of how, how it gets implemented and what it is and careful what toes. Uh, I also personally don't think that if you can't drink, you shouldn't be able to buy a gun. But, that's another, whole other deal. I know a lot of us grew up shooting guns at a young age. I sure did. My granddad, my dad, they really took us out shooting. So, whether it was skeet trap or hunting, so, had a lot of gun experience at an early age. But then we remember started acquiring them. They were gifts to me growing up also. So, you know, you had different occasions, but as far as going out and purchase, I'm not one of the guys that has a, a whole pile of them, but I do have some. Anyway, Tallahassee was a, a great trip. I think it was a successful trip. We had a special meeting with FDOT. I happened to invite Brian Koleka from Davie to join us because he is also on the NPO and he's the chair, assistant chair right now, will be the chair next year in the NPO. Regarding the additional traffic light that they want to put in going over seventy-five, um, we clearly let them know that we don't feel we need it, we don't want it, and we would greatly appreciate it if they would take the one that they put in out. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but, uh, so Davie and Brian Koleka also informed them that related to the park and ride space that they were going to attempt to do, but they're not, that if they had any ideas and considered that excess land, that Davie might consider purchasing it from them. So, so that was kind of interesting too, as far as, uh, so, we left there with a fairly good feeling of that traffic, traffic light not happening. We don't have any confirmation of that yet, but I promise you, I will stay on that so we know it is not on the board at all. Um, other than that, we met with a lot of our state representatives, senators, people that have been assisting and helping us out. Astronaut joined us. Um, who else joined us? Mike joined us on some occasions. Dean Parkinson joined us. Dean's been going up there for a long time relating the Fireman Association. And so, everybody knows him. I can't go twenty feet without him stopping to talk to somebody. So, having those contacts and those people and then tying it to our town because people don't realize where he lives sometimes, and we were up there on behalf of the town. So, uh, the connections and the people and who the people knew and Astronaut been going for a long time, uh, helps. So, you want to join in?
You should explain that we met Gary Farmer and what his-
Yeah, yeah. Gary Farmer is one of the gentlemen locally who helped, uh, put a squash to the annexation event that was trying to take place in Pembroke Vine. So, we made a stop by his office to greatly appreciate and thank him for his efforts. Uh, he did warn us that it was not probably gonna go away anytime soon.
It would happen.
So, that we should stay on it. Um, but other than that, I guess that's it. So, we'll go on into the rest of the meeting here. You want to go on, administer the legal comments? I'm sure you don't have any, but I'll throw it at you anyway. No legal comments. Nice to see everybody. Keith will be back next week and then we'll go for more. Appreciate it. Administration.
Andy, you're up.
Sure. Two things, very briefly. And Richard, this is for you to take back to Keith. It's something he's probably working on, but at the last meeting, there was some discussion and some issues raised from, from the floor on changes to our festival policy and becoming more punitive with the, the repeat offenders. And I believe that Keith was working on a change to that. I don't know what the status is because I haven't seen it. So, if you would just follow up with him on that, I would appreciate it.
Will do. Thanks.
Okay. The other thing is, I gave copies of a letter to all of you that left in your mailboxes today. We, we have had requests through many of you on the council from both Country Estates, HOA, and the, the Rolling Oaks Civic Association on completion of the guardrails along Griffin Road, along the C-11. There's a long section of, of roadway that's unprotected. There are no guardrails. And so, we, at, at the request of the HOAs and council members, we sent a letter to Anton, who heads that division up with the county, to ask them to take a look at that and consider it and, and get back to us with their thoughts. So, I just want to share that with you, with members of the public, that there is a section where, where there is a curb, it's not, I guess by, by traffic management standards, deemed as the same threat as without a curb, but that's a certainly a treacherous canal for somebody to go into. And we want to do everything we can to protect the public. So, we, we've made that request to the county. And that's, that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Um, I guess number eight.
This is, uh, the first item is a resolution of the town council, the town of Southwest Ranches, authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and zero cents to purchase a new utility vehicle and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, mayor, if I may, before, before there's a motion, there's a second on this. I'd like to, to kind of set the stage on that.
Go right ahead.
Couple of things I want to say. This item had originally come before you or was scheduled to come before you back in January. I had a conversation with councilmember Schroeder, who was concerned about the level of truck that we're buying, that, that our concern, I'll say publicly now, was that we might have been overbuying perhaps more capacity than we needed. And, and I didn't tell you all what the issue was, but I asked you that, that that item be tabled in January so that this could be reconsidered. And I, I told the council member at the time that I would go back and take a second look at it, that, that I might tell her she was right and I might tell her that I disagreed with it. But, but in, in either event, that I expected the item to, to be brought back. Uh, I do agree with her. We went back and looked at the towing capacity on what we need. Uh, and we were able to scale the truck back from what was a three-quarter ton, uh, four-wheel drive. We went to a two-wheel drive because we think that's actually gonna serve our purposes. We went to a half-ton. And this item had been budgeted this year for thirty thousand dollars. The, the larger truck was in excess of that. By, by scaling it back, we've been able to bring it in under what, what had originally been budgeted, which, which is obviously a plus. And, and we believe that this truck will do what we, we need it to do. So, that's, back before you in your book, that's based on a Dodge pickup truck. Uh, I had some conversations with, with the mayor, who had expressed some concern on a preference for a GMC rather than a Dodge. So, I do have some detailed pricing, which I'm gonna pass to you at the moment, on the GMC, which is approximately two thousand dollars more, but still does fall within the budgeted amount. So, at the end of the day, it's obviously a council decision. Uh, I believe that we, that we do need the truck. We had three vehicles. We had one that had broken down and, and we cleared that out at auction. We're down to two, both have very high mileage on it. So, for us to pick up a work truck that can haul trailer, can haul the, the message boards, do the things that we need to do, we think would be an asset. It's something we plan on keeping to, uh, as we did with the other, till the, till the wheels fall off. So, I do want to pass that along, just allow you guys to have a little bit of discussion on this perhaps before you actually make a, a motion and move forward.
Andy, if I could add something else along with that. In getting rid of two cars and some light bars at auction, we got back, what, approximately twenty-nine hundred dollars to the town? So, additionally, we got back twenty-nine hundred dollars. So, you can minus twenty-nine hundred dollars off of whatever this budget is again. So, so it's really even a little, we're doing a little better than we thought. So, we budgeted for more. We got some money back for a couple of cars and light bars. Uh, so, my own personal opinion is, I like a GMC or Chevy better. GMC happens to be less money than the Chevy is. Uh, I know somebody here that's in the audience that just bought a Dodge recently. It's had quite a bit of trouble with it. It's only got seventeen thousand miles on it. Uh, so, anyway, uh, he's not the only one. I know a couple of other people who've bought him who's had some issues. But I would tell you, vehicle, most vehicles built today will go a hundred thousand miles as long as they have just a little, you know, change of oil filter, doing, just doing general maintenance, you should get a hundred thousand miles in your sleep. Uh, and a lot of vehicles, two hundred thousand miles. I'll tell you, I've got a Toyota Sequoia that I bought from you that has in excess of two hundred thousand miles on it. And it's a two thousand and two. And, you know, a change of oil, do the brakes, uh, do the timing chain or whatever, and the thing's still running like a top. So, I'll drive it to Door, Carolina tomorrow if I need it to. But, uh, anyhow, here and there, um, I don't know, and did we get the answer on the extended warranty before it expires or not?
On the GMC, we can buy the, I mean, we've budgeted for it now.
I, I get that, but that's-
But we can buy the extended warranty, uh, as long as we purchase it within twelve thousand miles or twelve months, whichever comes first, we, we can purchase it later.
So, it's not three-year, thirty-six thousand period?
Uh, well, we have to-
The standard warranty is three-year, thirty-six thousand.
Yeah, no, you're, you're correct on that. But for us to, to buy the extended warranty, we have to do that within the first year, twelve thousand-
First twelve thousand.
Right, correct.
Okay.
And, and they're, I just, yeah, from a staff standpoint-
Yeah.
We're not married to either.
Right.
We advanced this based on the Dodge, just based on the pricing.
Right.
Certainly based on the pricing. Obviously, it's a council decision and staff is certainly fine with either.
Okay.
What's the warranty on the Dodge?
Seven-year, hundred thousand.
What was the question, Steve?
What was the warranty on the Dodge?
Six years.
Seven.
Hundred thousand.
Six years, a hundred thousand.
That's what it says here. Seven years, sorry. Seven-year, a hundred thousand, a hundred dollar deductible.
That would be the extended warranty that we were, we were purchasing. Correct. That's the extended warranty.
That's what I was trying, I was just trying to get that back.
Yeah, that's the extended, yeah, but that's in the, that's in the budget number. That's in-
No, 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 but a lot of them, I, I guess, within, did you pass out the chart with all three of them on it, Andy?
Uh, oh, hold on.
All right. Hold on, you gotta see all three of these. Cause they have extended warranty on all of them. I, I personally don't feel we need the extended warranty, unfortunately, because if we maintain them properly, uh, I think it's, 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 it's not an issue. Um, but there's another issue we're gonna address at another time related to getting maintenance and getting service done. So, um, I think we have some better options related to that, um, which I'll, I'll bring up in another meeting, but, uh-
Okay, I jump in.
Anyhow.
Go ahead. I have a big problem with it. It's not a Ford.
The what?
Yeah. It's not a Ford. It's not a Ford. It's not a Ford. They may pick up, they, when you say Ford, you say pickup truck. You know, end of story. Having said that-
My Ford pickup truck has over two hundred thousand miles on it, just for the record.
I, I just recently sold one that had, uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand and, and I'm working on another hundred thousand on another one. Anyway, um, that, that's my only real contention, that it's not a Ford. But, uh, you know, we definitely need a pickup truck. We need it in our arsenal of vehicles. And we, for years, Andy's been trying, every year, to try to get a new vehicle to replace the aging fleet that we inherited back with the, the BSO and, and all that years ago. And, you know, for many, many years, I can't, I can't count the number of years. I watched poor December take her personal pickup truck and ran that into the ground and her Kubota and everything towing stuff all over the place for the town, you know, for years. And we really need to offer that relief and, and have, have a pickup truck at our disposal. So, I'm, I'm all for it. And the Dodge is fine. I'm just kidding about, you know, teasing about the Ford, but, cause I, that's all I drive is Fords. So, but, yeah, we definitely need it. And if, if the Dodge has, it comes complete and under budget with the extended warranty, I, I, I'm in support of it.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question. Our town is a town. A pickup truck goes with our town.
Yeah.
You know, that's part of our heritage.
Absolutely.
But, but you don't just buy a vehicle just because it really kind of goes with the rural lifestyle. I mean, it, it, that's not the reason. Uh, at first, when I looked at this and I was just given another paper, it had a V-eight in there. The maximum you are supposed to do in this town, and we can ask the officers, let's say on Griffin Road, it's forty-five miles an hour. Do you know what a V-eight will do? Riding around town going a half a mile here and half a mile there and a mile here? It's gonna go, more money, more money, more money. It's gonna just suck gas. So, that was not necessary. I, I've had a chance to, to look at some of the other stuff. I'm not really sure about the deep tint windows. However, I do believe, living in South Florida, you need tinted windows because of the heat and it, it does keep you from burning your bottom when you get in half the time. Uh, the warranty, I didn't, I didn't really like that. I like the idea of titties. Um, the, the bed liner, that's a plus. Yeah, the bed liner. You know, I know for a fact that people are hauling dirt and this and stuff that'll eat up the trucks, so this is a good thing. But I just, uh, like I said, overall, just because you-
say on Griffin Road, is forty-five miles an hour. Do you know what a V-eight will do? Riding around town going a half a mile here and half a mile there and a mile here? It's gonna go, more money, more money, more money. It's gonna just suck gas, so that was not necessary. I, I've had a chance to look at some of the other stuff. I'm not really sure about the tinted windows. However, I do believe, living in South Florida, you need tinted windows because of the heat, and it does keep you from burning your bottom when you get in half the time. Uh, the warranty, I didn't, I didn't really like that. I liked the idea of titties. Um, the bed liner, that's a plus. Yeah, the bed liner. You know, I know for a fact that people are hauling dirt and this and stuff that'll eat up the trucks, so this is a good thing. But I just, uh, like I said, I don't know, just because you allocate monies for something if you really don't need it, it doesn't mean you have to spend it. It just means it's there for you and it's already been set aside, so, um, I, I don't know, you know, if you want to take more off of this. Um, I guess the mirrors, the beacon, all of that, you know, this is stuff, these are almost like safety things. If someone's using that and they're out in the middle of the road, maybe they'll sign or something like that. And they shouldn't have some kind of lights up there letting people know, I'm stopped in the middle of the road, I'm doing something, so please don't smash into me. Um, and I kind of agree with you guys. It isn't a Ford. It isn't a Chevy. It isn't, it's a Dodge and, um, I'm just not a, a big fan. I probably won't get my waters from the Dodge people, two years, but I'm just not a big fan, so.
Okay. So anyhow, uh, Andy?
Public?
I've got, uh, the others...
I, I know we don't have a resul, uh, a, a motion and a second on the floor. Sorry, I know we don't have a motion and a second on the floor, but I don't know if you want to open it to the public.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I'll second it. I assume the motion is to...
This is just, we haven't picked the truck yet.
It's not a GM or a Chevy, so I'll go with the Dodge.
Oh, my God.
No, just kidding.
I prefer the GM myself, but...
I'd stated.
I'll second. Yes.
It's open to the public.
Go ahead. Public?
Okay.
Noah's worth a hundred ninety-nine thousand. As Dee said, the five-seven seven-liter, you know, V-eight. You know, as a gas sucker, I don't know if we need that, but what we do in our town hauling, we're go, I don't think we're going to be hauling the sixty-foot trailers around anywhere. So maybe we can take a look at that area. And I'm very upset that you changed it from January, cause I really wanted to get off on the leather seats and yell and scream about them. Just throwing away, um, money. But there's still two areas I'd like to look at, is the, the lead of the tint. I don't know if that's necessary. But definitely not the black tubular steps for five ninety-four. I'm sorry, um, I've never had a pickup truck with the steps on it. I don't, unless they're for decorative purposes. And, uh, you know, I've had a straight six in my Ford truck since nineteen ninety-one. And I was going to get up here and tell you that, you know, maybe I made a mistake back then when I got cloth seats. Instead of the leather seats, which last longer, have a higher resale value. And since mine's ninety-one, they'll probably increase by these, they'll value by three hours and thirty-four cents or something like that, if I had the leather seats in them now. So, anyway, I like that you brought it back down from thirty-eight thousand dollars last month to twenty-six eight, but I think there's some other additional savings that you can do there, and you'd like for the council to take a look at that. And what we really need and what we actually need instead of what we want. And, uh, you know, and if we want to have the, uh, area of, um, being part of our rural ranch livestock, we'll throw some jeans in the back of the van, you know? So you go around the corner, you can hear that rail rattle.
This, if you take the base price on this, that's on the Dodge, and then we take the base price and same options on the truck.
Yeah, okay. No other public comment?
You all saw how tall December is. Come on, guys. I mean, he's up here at six-nine, and he can fall into the seat. At least give her some sort of a step if, if you want to cut down on the cost, you know, and you can give her a ladder. Maybe she can throw the ladder out to get up in the truck.
I mean, come on.
Hey, Tony Brown, sixteen two-one Hancock Road. You know, you're doing a great price for the truck. If you go out shopping for vehicles, you can't get a Toyota for less than thirty thousand dollars anymore, so, all disrespect, I mean, twenty-six thousand is a great price on a vehicle. Tinted windows, you definitely should get, have a little consideration for the person driving, and the heat, and also tinted windows saves the interior, so the truck will last a little bit longer, so, uh, I think you guys should definitely get this vehicle for the amount of money that you spent it. Thank you.
Hey, Robert Schroeder, one-six-six-nine-one, Southwest Forty-Ninth Street. Uh, just an idea, can we leverage the purchase of the truck with the dealership to get them to do a sponsorship our way? That we could use on, for some of the committeeists to raise funds or something? We should be able to leverage this purchase.
Go ahead, Andy.
And we don't have that ability, Robert, and a reason for that is, it's, we're not just going to the dealer and buying. This is based on a statewide contract. That's one of the reasons that we're getting the price that we're able to get on this. It's a state contract under, I think it's under the Florida Sheriff's Association.
All right, just an idea.
Well...
Yeah, certainly, go ahead.
Um, something I want to say. Have, have you checked with other dealerships besides just the Florida, uh, contract?
We have, we haven't gone to the dealership to buy it. We have compared it to other statewide contracts. This was the most favorable, the statewide contract.
Okay, uh, one more thing. Um, right now, their inventory is very large, so I know there's two thousand seventeens, which are, I mean, they've never been off the lot. So have we looked into them? Because I'm pretty sure if I go into a truck dealer and I'm looking at a two thousand seventeen, you know, basically a standard package with a few upgrades, they're probably going to be running out in the parking lot saying, please don't go. Come on back in here, we'll make a deal, you know? So I'm, I'm just saying, have we looked into that?
I don't know the answer to that, and I could potentially put Marty on the spot because I know Mara, who's doing the procurement on this, works under Marty, but I don't believe that that's been the case. And I don't know that the contract necessarily applies to past year's vehicles. I know if you go into the dealership and they have an old vehicle, yeah, they're generally very happy to make you a deal on it and have you take it off the lot. But, but purchasing where we are under their contract, I don't know if that's the same viable option. But we can certainly look at it if we can, if we can buy it for less. I, I'm sorry, Marty does want to jump in.
With the same amount?
If I may, yeah, certainly.
Yes, we looked into that, I know Mara did, because we're under the state Florida Sheriff's Association purchasing, when the new year for fiscal year eighteen, only the eighteens are available. We can't go back to the seventeen. So if we would go and pursue a seventeen, we'd have to do it as a private purchase, which would require us to do for, you know, another formal bidding process. And we've looked at that, and the pricing, uh, as, on a private sector for us to go and bid is more money than the eighteen. So the seventeens would be, um, not a, um, the, the, um, usually they blow out seventeen. The private sector would be more money than a eighteen, uh, under the Florida Sheriff's Association.
Under the Flor...
Under the Florida Sheriff's, but what we're, I guess we're trying to get at, if you walk into a dealership, if you go up here on Sunrise, you go to Ed Moore Chevrolet, and you walk in there and say, what's the best deal you can give me on a seventeen in stock like this with, with at least this stuff on it? And it might have more. A lot of times, you can get a stupid fabulous deal on last year's model. Has nothing to do with the share for anybody else. So that's what we're trying to...
I guess, I guess my concern is this, is, you know, we have procurement, uh, processes that we have to follow here. We got to get the three quotes. We've got it, we have to do things in a professional way. We can't just go to the dealership and negotiate a deal with the dealer.
Three dealers.
You know, we would have to go to three different dealers, we would have to, this is, this is a great price. Try, try and, try and match this price at a dealer. You know, am I saying that there's not a dealer in Florida that can beat this price? No, I'm not saying that. But this is a very good price. We're getting good value for the dollars that we're spending here. And frankly, you know, the eighteens come out in the last quarter, like September of twenty seventeen, so to get a seventeen now, it's, it's almost a year old. It's, it's a good half a year old. So I, you know, I, I think that we, I think we're getting good value for money. I think that we're doing it the right way. We, uh, you know, I applaud the fact that we looked at it again, and we saved money from where we originally were, um, but I'm, I'm for, let's, let's get this truck and let's put it to action.
Yeah, I'd like to add too, the upgrade on the engine and the towing capacity. We're not going to need that extra towing capacity. I don't believe we are, but what it does is it takes a two-thousand-pound load and makes it like a walk in the park.
Right.
You know, as opposed to the truck straining with a V-six, okay? And those of us that are tow boats and equipment and trailers know what I'm talking about, when you've got to go up and over a bridge, or you've got to do this, or you've got to do that. So I, the upgrade in the towing capacity and the engine and the transmission and all that will translate into a longer life and longer capability.
I, I don't, I don't agree with that. I, I don't think you need to haul two thousand pounds. I don't think we've hauled two thousand pounds. I mean, that's a good size of elephant. But as far as trying to put it secondary and get it down the road, it would probably cost us as much money. So if you want to include the towing package, that's, that didn't seem to be a problem. There was, like I said, a couple of things on here, the extended warranty, um, when the first one came out and they had a big V-eight on it, you don't need that big V-eight, Gary, you know better than that. It's, it's, you're not hauling that much. You are not going to tell me that maybe those little signs out there or hauling tables and chairs is going to take and require a big V-eight. It is not. It will not. And anybody hauling that much weight, I mean, where is it coming from? Where? We're not hauling that kind of stuff. Tables and chairs got to be moved from park to park, or supplies, um, some of the events. We're talking once a year to haul some stuff. Not on an everyday basis, where it would really tear down a, a transmission. Do we build a transmission today? Do you know what it costs to have a transmission complete when we build? I don't know. It's around a thousand dollars. You know? I mean, that's like nothing, but the average vehicle bay isn't like it was thirty years ago. These vehicles are meant to last as far as the guts of the car, the engines and motors of transmissions. They're, they're meant to take that. There's many people running around in this town, and I can guarantee you, they have well over a hundred thousand miles on their trucks. Boys have their trucks, they're not willing to give them up right away, you know? So, I...
I disagree.
Well, I think the deal that we have here that the staff has put together, I think is, suits our needs and it, uh, you know, it'll take us into the future. I see no reason not to support it. I fully support it. I mean, you got a double-axle trailer out there, it's a thousand pounds already, empty.
Three thousand, three thousand.
That's just the hook up.
So where are we on Dodge versus GMC or Chevy?
Both different things.
Oh, you have a motion on the floor?
What happened to the Ford?
It wasn't what? They didn't ask for it.
We own it.
Nobody, nobody told Andy to get a price for Ford.
No, he got a Ford, man. I think, you know, to get to your point, the, I see no reason to spend two thousand dollars more for a different brand. The, you know, everybody, everybody, you know what? If you own a Ford, you love Ford. If you own a Dodge, you love Dodge. If you own a GMC or a Chevy, you love them too. That's just the way it is. You get attached to one, and that's the one you want. I, I would never personally buy anything but a Ford, but that's all I've ever bought. So, you know, that's the way it is. So I've had Ford, so I've had a... Now we're spending, let me finish, now we're spending the town's money. Okay? So I get that we're not buying a Ford, I'm over that, but, you know, it's, it's two thousand dollars cheaper.
I'm going to fix your two thousand dollars. We just got back twenty-nine hundred from the other cars and the lights for twenty-nine hundred.
That goes against whatever we, we buy.
I get it, but I'm just saying, it, it, your two thousand dollar fight...
It comes with the extended warranty, it's seven years.
They all do. Anyhow, hold on, let me, let me invite George Morris up and tell us about his Dodge real quick. Come on up here, George. I want to hear about your Dodge, your brand-new fifteen-hundred diesel Dodge and seventeen thousand miles. Get up here and tell them, will you? Come on! I want you to get up here and tell them, because this is the real deal. Yeah.
I'm not for Dodge or Ford or Chevy, really doesn't make a difference to me. I bought Dodge because it just happened to be the, the most economical vehicle for me at the time. Nonetheless, I am experiencing a problem with the, with the def system, the exhaust filter, that it's failed at eight thousand miles and then sixteen thousand miles, and now my vehicle's down. They told me until April twelve, until they get a new filter somewhere in the world, so...
That's not necessary.
That's a diesel fifteen-hundred thousand.
That's not necessary. I just want to point that out. We're comparing an apple.
He's not the only guy I know having problems with his Dodge.
Everybody, yeah.
So...
Just pointing it out, guys, that's all.
Well, uh, you know, I'll go along under, uh, on the Dodge under one condition. If it's more, in the shop for more than a month ever, we sell it and buy something else.
Call a question. Call a question. Or not?
Or not.
Ready for the vote?
Ready? Councilmember Schroeder? No. Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Brighters?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
No.
Motion passes.
Next?
Next. A resolution of the town council of the town, of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving a purchase order with Keith and Associates, Inc., in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for engineering and surveying services for the Florida Department of Environmental Protection-funded drainage improvements, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Public comment? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Back to us. Any comments? No comments, call a question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Brighters?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number ten.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand, eight hundred dollars and thirteen cents to Motorola Solutions, Inc., to purchase, uh, public safety communication equipment for the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Rescue, Inc., and providing for an effective date.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I do have a comment that I'd like to make on this. While I do support this purchase, um, I don't think it's required right at this moment. And so I think that, generally speaking, the warranty will start when you're already...
I can answer you. Yes, I'm prepared.
Okay, then go for it.
Okay. Yeah. Just to put, to put all this in context, Broward County is changing the radio system for fire rescue throughout the county. We have no choice but to upgrade and, and change to this new system. Their kickoff date is scheduled for March of next year. They have requested that everybody have the radios in place six to eight months in advance for, for testing programming to make sure that everybody's ready to go, you know, coming into March. So, what, what we'd like to do, and the warranty on the radios is three years. So what I, what I would like to do is get the approval from council to move forward tonight. What we will do is then follow up with the manufacturer, find out what the lead time on these, and, and we will, we actually replace the order as late as we can in the current
on these, and we will actually replace the order as late as we can in the current fiscal year in order to have them here to meet the requirements of the county, but to extend that warranty as long as we possibly can. Does that address your concern?
That's where I was going, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment closed.
I have something to ask.
Go ahead.
What happens to the old ones?
Within Broward County, there are doorstops or boat anchors. However, we will, everybody in the county's in the same position, so there may be, that radio system may exist elsewhere, whether it's in other countries or in other places within this country. So the radios themselves should have some value, I don't know what that value will be, but there's no reason for us to put them in a box and tuck them in the corner. It's in our best interest to find a way to surplus them and move them and collect whatever we can for them.
Okay, well, if it's the whole county, why is, is the county going to check into there and find out? Do we turn them into the county?
The county won't be doing it, but the individual fire stations will, the departments, and so we'll communicate with them and see where we can partner and surplus those radios.
Okay, call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Dee, you're not paying attention, you called the question.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. I think the ball goes to you, you guess, or who was it?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about our GIS program and provide a brief GIS update for you. I've passed out previously a handout, and if you can follow along, I also have some extras here at the front, if anybody would like to follow along, there's some extras here. So first, I'd like to introduce you to our GIS team. Our GIS team consists of Emily Assetti, our community services manager, Rod Lay, our town engineer, Robert Solera, our community development director, and myself. So just wanted to give you a little bit of background. Back in the summer of 2015, our town administrator, along with the town attorney and the previous town engineer, met with county staff to discuss the wetlands determination process. And during that meeting, it was conveyed that if the town were to implement a GIS system, that we would be able to begin making wetlands determinations in-house. So the town went forward with that kind of information, and we began the process of budgeting for and trying to acquire a GIS system. We budgeted for it in the 2016 budget. We acquired the GIS system from the only provider, which was Esri, on November tenth, 2016. Town staff, including all of the GIS team, were trained in April and May of 2017. And in July, myself, along with the town engineer, Mr. Lay, went to meet with the county staff to basically talk to them about the wetlands determination process and begin to implement that program here. What we discovered, unfortunately, was that the county doesn't maintain their wetland determinations on a GIS layer, unlike what we would like to believe. What they do is, they have wetland determinations, they go out and make a determination, and they have paper files. And they put that into basically a spreadsheet. So there was no GIS layer that we could simply import into our existing GIS system. So what we had to do was obviously build the GIS layer, and we began the process of doing that. That took several months, it was a lot of labor, there were hundreds of determinations that affected the town. And in January of 2018, I'm happy to say that we finally have, we finally created and tested the wetland layer, and we've completed it and have verified it. So what I'm here to tell you today is that we have several deliverables, one of them being the wetlands layer, which we'll kind of show you in a minute. We also have others between the work of our staff here and also our partners, including the town of Davie and the county. We also have a fire wells layer, a layer that depicts the different gates that the town has on the different roads out west. We have an address layer that shows parcel addresses, as well as all of the streets in the town. We have fire zones, police zones, a zoning map, and a future land use map as well. So this, I'm just going to show you screenshots, we're not going to actually pull up the GIS system because there's a lot to do there, so I just want to kind of show you what they look like. For the wetlands deliverables, if, the purpose again of this layer was to utilize this in concert with Broward County staff to allow in-house staff, town staff, to make determinations. So if a determination by Broward County has not been made, or the data is unclear, the applicant would still have to make it, would still have to get a determination made by the county. But what we're able to do right now is to utilize the layers that we've, the wetland layer that we created, and determine whether or not that wetlands determination had previously been done by the county. So if you look at the layer that's there on the next, well, you can utilize this slide, you can see that there are some parcels that have green colors, some parcels that have blue colors, and some parcels that are just still white. So what the blue means is that a wetlands determination has already been made by the county, okay? So if an applicant comes in and wants to build, we can look at that layer and determine that a wetlands determination has been made and that there is a wetlands there. If a parcel is green, what we know is that the county went out there, made a determination, and there is no wetlands there. So they would not need to go to the county in any of those instances. So what happens with the white layers? Well, the white layers are parcels that have not had a determination made yet. Now, what we did get the county to agree to, when Mr. Lay and myself went to meet with county staff, was that we felt that by utilizing the LiDAR layer, which I'll show you in just a few minutes, we would, we believe that we would have some level of comfort. And if we had a level of comfort that there was not a wetland on that particular parcel, what we'd like to be able to do is say, we're comfortable with that, that there's not a wetland out here, and not have to force the, excuse me, enforce the person to go to the county and, you know, spend that extra time and that money to get a wetlands determination. If you look on the next page, this page, this shows you the wetlands layer right now that we've imported and created based on the hard copy wetlands determinations that were done by the county. And what you see here again is the parcel, the different colored parcels, and what you see is an attribute table that's associated with that layer. This attribute table is where the, you know, this is where all the backend work goes. And this is what we have to make sure is clean, is accurate, because this is what's going to determine what displays on these layers. So again, there's a lot of work that goes behind it. I'm happy to say today, if you go to the next page, you'll see an actual applicant that came in recently, just recently, and we were able to tell them that a determination had been made and they didn't need to go to the county at all. So we saved that person the money to go to the county, and we saved them the trip, which was the whole aim of us bringing the GIS system in-house. So I'm happy to say we have one success story so far. Unfortunately, we also had two others that came in, and there were determinations made by the county previously that there was a wetland on their particular property. So they still had to go to the county for those, but we still were able to give them concrete information, which, you know, is what the layer was designed to do. What I'd like to do now is show you the LiDAR layer. So LiDAR is used to determine elevations. Basically, what happens is a laser is used on a plane, the plane flies over the topography of the area, and it shoots elevations with that layer, with that laser. With that, these different parcels that haven't already had a determination made, we feel comfortable that we'll be able to identify what the elevation is, and if we have that level of comfort, that an elevation is certainly not a wetland. Let's say there's an elevation of five or ten or higher, that we would not have to send that person to the county to get a determination, because we would have that level of comfort. What the county has told us is if we have that level of comfort, as long as we can, you know, confirm that with them, discuss that with them, that they would have no problem with us making those determinations. So we would be able to save those residents, those applicants, that trip to the county, and that money. The next page again shows another image of the LiDAR, along with that attribute table again. So this has all of the background information, it has all the GPS coordinates, the object IDs, all of the, you know, the nuts and bolts of what makes the pretty pictures look the way that they do, okay? I want to show you another deliverable that we have right now. We have a layer that depicts all of the fire wells in the town. Now what we plan on doing with this layer is we're going to use this layer to keep track of this capital asset. So we have fire wells in the town, as we all know, but we haven't really kept track of when they've all been maintained, replaced, improved, damaged, what have you. Utilization of this layer will allow us to add a field that will tell us when we install a new fire well, when it was installed, when it was maintained, if there was an accident, if it was damaged in some way, if it was damaged. So we'll be able to keep track of that asset a lot better than we have in the past. We'll also be able to keep track of maintenance as well. So on the next page, you see again the fire well with the attribute table, again the nuts and bolts with the GPS coordinates for each one of these fire wells. Now I want to talk to you about proposed future layers or future enhancements. The first one being Tisdor. So if you look at this particular page, we have a segment of the Tisdor project that has been completed. I don't know how well it shows up to everyone out in the audience, but you'll see some of the darker lines there, and these roadways, Rod, can you confirm two oh fifth, two oh eighth and two ten, correct? So you'll see that this segment of Tisdor that was completed. What we plan on having is the completed ones, future years and everything else, we'll be able to graphically depict that information for people, and also at some point in the future, put it on our website. So some of the other proposed future enhancements that we have planned, the first one is drainage structures. And now, these are not in any particular order of priority, just other things that we plan on doing at some point. So drainage structures, as we, you know, put in a covert, a catch base and things like that, we'll be able to go ahead and put this in the system, keep track of it. Again, the same thing, we'll be able to keep track of when it was installed, things like how much it cost us, what the life expectancy is, things like that, when it was maintained, and so on. Another one potentially, right-of-way acquisition. As right-of-ways are dedicated to the town, we'll be able to have a better idea of, you know, what the town has in its inventory, we'll be able to keep track of when it came in, items like that. Private roads, this was a concern, an issue that was brought up when we were faced with the Hurricane Irma recovery, and going out and making sure that we had all of our private roads, identifying who the private road owners were, so we could reach out to them and get that letter signed off, so that we could begin cleanup in those areas. This would help us to identify that, have that in our arsenal already. It'll be able to allow us to kind of respond a lot more quickly than we were able to do in Hurricane Irma. And as, obviously, as those roads become public roads, we would be able to update those layers as well. Another one that we want to be able to do soon, and this one, we have a leg up on it because we have already the structure behind it, which is, as I mentioned to you before, those attribute tables that I showed you, they kind of look like spreadsheets. So we have something already for code enforcement violations. That was a desire of council to graphically put that out there at some point. We'll be able to do that, we think, you know, pretty soon, because we already have, thanks to Mr. Solera, we have that spreadsheet that identifies active code violations. So this would be another layer that we could create, we think, pretty quickly. Other items that we would have on tap, and we think we're going to be able to get pretty soon, is residential community facilities, those group homes and sober homes. And then some other things that we want to think about in the near future is a GIS online portal, where we'd be able to create a webpage on our current website that people can go in and actually see that. So not only residents, but also staff. Right now, as it stands, only the four members of the GIS team have access to the program, and that's because of licensing. We wanted to keep the license price down and the cost down on the project. By putting it on an online portal, the different layers that we create, we'd be able to share it with staff and council, residents, whoever wanted to see it, by putting it on our website. And then, of course, any council priorities, anything that should come up in the future, we determine in two years that we need to have a layer for, you know, telecommunications towers, whatever the case might be, that's something that we could create, okay? So the next item, future needs. So what do we need to maintain the current system that we have and to make it better? One of the things that we would like to see possibly, but I don't think it's going to be an immediate need, is the potential for a GIS server. And what a GIS server will do is have a dedicated server to just handle the rendering, the creation of these different layers. Right now, we have a server that's partitioned off, and we have a segment of that server that's right now just dedicated solely for GIS creation. We have Apple space on that server, I believe, but at some point in the future, we may need to do it. Some of these files that we're getting from the county, from the state, they're very large files. One of these, I was told by Mr. Lay, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the LiDAR layer that was issued, or that comes from the state, is about twenty gigs. That's one layer. From there, you still have to do other things to it, making that file even larger. So those are things that we may need to think about. The other thing is coordinate collectors. So right now, we, thankfully, with our partners, we've been able to get a lot of information that we've been able to put into the system. We also have the benefit of utilizing RGIS's collector app, which is an app that you can put on a smartphone or a tablet, and you can acquire GIS coordinates just by going around and marking where you are. It'll give you the coordinates. The only problem with that is that they're not super accurate, okay? The accuracy, I think we were told, is somewhere in the neighborhood of within a thousand feet. Is that correct, Mr. Lay?
That's...
Is that correct?
Unacceptable.
Yes. Okay. So obviously, that's not to the level of accuracy that we would like, but for certain things, it might, it might work. We want to get, at some point in the future, these handheld collectors, or there's even ones that you can put on a backpack, there's different ways to collect the information. But those collectors, the ones that are more accurate, obviously are more expensive. We're looking at each collector being in the neighborhood of about five thousand dollars.
Cheaper than radios.
I'm sorry?
I said it's cheaper than radios.
So that's something to think about. We don't need it right now, but it's something to think about. Another thing is potentially having a part-time staffer or a consultant to help us. As you saw from the attribute tables, it's very data-intensive to create these layers. Developing a new layer on the fly is very time-intensive. Can staff do it? We can do it. We have the knowledge to do it, it's just that it's very labor-intensive, and with all of the other tasks that we have, it takes away from, you know, there's an opportunity cost there. So we may want to think about utilizing a, you know, a part-time staff person, getting somebody from the university who's well-versed in GIS, or using another consultant to do that. Lastly, I want to just bring up that we have currently a, what I'll call a building technology reserve. And what I would like to see if we can do, I want to get an opinion, an official opinion from the town attorney when he comes back, to talk to him about utilizing that reserve, which we've utilized for digitization of records and things like that, to fund all of the above requirements. So that's the...
You done?
That's the conclusion of my presentation. Do you have any questions?
I'm going to ask for Councilmember Breckers' assistance and help on this one. But I'm going to tell you that you need to get on that server, independent server for just this program all by itself, yesterday. I don't think we want to wait till we get dragged down or slowed down and have an issue as we add layers and add to this stuff. I just, I don't know what kind of expense, but you're more up to speed on this kind of stuff than I am, so...
Yeah, no, and I think you're exactly right. I think that if we're going to, if, let me just back up for a second. So I think what you've presented today is confirmation that this is a great tool for the town today, and there's incredible amount of potential in the future. But it is, as the mayor is saying, it is a technology tool that is, if it's, if we don't support it in the right way, it'll always, it'll never perform the way we want it to. So I definitely would also support looking at it from doing some of these upgrades specifically for a server, to try and keep it so that it's up to speed and that it's usable. The two things that really jumped out at me with the server, and then the other one is getting that portal to where the residents can use it. I mean, to me, that's huge. If all the residents, if this becomes available to all the residents to be able to log on there and look at their own property and see at their, you know, from their living room, whether there are wetlands or not, that's huge. So, you know, those are the two things that really jumped out at me. But, yeah, we need to, and let me just, great job to you and the rest of the staff that has been working on this. This is, you all have done a monster amount of work, and it really, it shows, and so I appreciate that. One other thought, and then I'll turn it back over. I'm wondering, as far as this part-time staff, there, I don't know how technical it is, but frankly, I'm not sure it matters.
It does.
There are, just from the standpoint, my recommendation would be, there are some highly intelligent, technology-oriented students at our high schools, and I think this would be a whale of a project for a summer intern or two or three. I think it would be a great experience for them. I think they could do a vast amount of the work that we need done for a very, you know, very reasonable price.
Thank you, thank you for that input, Councilmember. We have kind of discussed that a student would make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if a high school or college makes sense, but I think the fact that it would have to be some type of paid... would have to be some type of paid intern, I think makes a big difference, because there has to be some buy-in. And what we found in different, in this organization and in others, is that if you just have a volunteer, yes, it's helpful, but they don't have the same level of buy-in as a person who's being paid a salary, so...
Anyhow, back on with that, I would tell you that we have some absolute immediate issues as far as layers. And some of them are road right-of-way stuff, that I can tell you, we need to flag, because people out there doing construction, building now. I'll give you a perfect example, the old airstrip that's closed now, there's a sturdy road 50-foot right-of-way that guys are building out in and putting slabs and everything else, and we're like, sitting on our hands like, "Oh, well, you can't do that." So we're sending code enforcer out there and saying, you know, "I'm stopping these guys. I'm going up and saying, 'Don't do that, because you're going to have a problem. There's 50 feet here.'" And they're like, "Huh? What? Oh, it could be a whole work." And so, right now, we're having issues, not only on road right-of-way regularly, but where people are placing their fences within right-of-ways and all kinds of stuff. So I don't know if that has to be a separate layer relating to that. I know you showed a fire hydrant layer, and I know these are snapshots of the program, don't get me wrong. But my question is now, that I saw the fire hydrants, do we have all the fire hydrants in town already mapped on a layer? Or do we only have, because I only saw Sunshine Ranches?
Yeah, that was just a segment of the town. I would say that we probably, I won't say 100%, but I would say we probably have 99%. We would certainly be going back through it to audit it before we release that.
I mean, because it was easier to do the presentation the way you did it than it was the program, to wait for stuff to load and speed and all that. And that's the other reason, going back to the server, have a standalone server. So we're not going to have any issues growing this program and adding to it as we go. You know, why wait till you're going to have a problem when you know you're going to have one? You know? So that's a crucial thing, but I'm going to tell you, I'm going to come back with a list that I think priorities, and I'm even going to give you locations that we have to come flag, because when people come into the building department or see Robert, or CAP, or whoever, if we don't have it flagged up here on this program, nobody's going to know that we have to take this right-of-way, or have that, or take this, you know? And then we're just going to issue a permit, and they're going to go ahead and build, and everything's done, we're going to hand the CO and say, "Oh, by the way, we forgot to take this from you." That's not going to go over real well. So, I don't know if you want to jump in more on that?
No, 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 no. I want one other quick note, but no, I agree with what you're saying. And I think that's the beauty of this system, is that when we come up with other things that need to be highlighted, as you mentioned, you know, it can do that. I would love to see a horse trail layer, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
So it's laid out there, and we can, you know, see how we need to fill in some gaps and things like that. I've never been able to really, really see that the way I would have liked to have.
December.
Mayor, and council, if I could just say one other thing, the beauty of this system is that it's so powerful, I would venture to say you could just about do anything that you can imagine.
Right.
The issue is the resource, right? So if we have the time, the energy, the money behind it to do it, we can do just about anything that you like.
I would tell you that I think in next budget season, that you all need to budget for a part-time person to come in and help us with these layers. I don't have a problem with the student thing that you're suggesting, but it may take a paid person to...
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I recognize what you're saying, but I just have to think that this is an up-and-coming tool, and that a high school student that is into technology would be...
Pretty, pretty...
A quick study. A quick study, and be pretty diligent at it, you know, for the experience.
Yeah, I don't think we would rule out a high school student, but just keep in mind, this is a very specialized skill.
I know.
And it's not, you know, it's not web programming, it's not blogging, it's not something that they teach at the high schools at this point, but certainly, there might be a high school student out there that has this level of skill, and that's fine. I wouldn't be averse to it. But because we're doing something on behalf of the town of Southwest Ranches, I think myself and the rest of the team are going to be very wary about, or very, very aware of, the skill set that the person's going to bring to the table, because it's going to be, it's not going to be the student that hears about it, if you know what I mean.
Yep.
We're going to be accountable for it, so we're going to make sure that it's someone who can do the job and do it right.
Good. Let me add to it that we've had it for more than a year. We have been training, we have had groups and training and whatnot. Me personally, I think now that we have it, we're familiar with it, we don't believe we have the time with our staff who are on it to take enough time out to make these layers happen fast enough for us.
I agree.
So that's why I'm saying, whether it's part-time in the budget for next year, or whatever we're doing moving forward, we need to get some of this stuff done a lot sooner than later.
Yep.
So I think it's critical, as we move forward, now that we have it, and it's a tool, it's in play, it's started, it's functioning, that we need to build on it and get the data. The other problem occurred, as we went to the county to get data, and because they don't run this program this way, there's this difference, they couldn't just hand us a USB thing and say, "Oh, go take it and load it in." So it didn't, doesn't work that way. So I don't know how it's happening. Is it all hand put in now, or what? What's the process? For ones that can't merge with us with this program, the other people that have it, how does that get, what's the input process?
Well, if it's a GIS layer that they have, then it's much simpler, as you alluded to. In the instance of the wetlands from the county, as I indicated earlier, they were hard copies, and PDF files. So we ended up getting the PDF files from them, but we had to build those attribute tables, and basically, it took us months to do that. So that's why, you know, we didn't get that layer ready until, it's not been ready until January of this year. You know? So it was very labor-intensive.
Yeah.
It's gotten done, so...
Let me ask a question.
Yeah, jump in.
You mentioned a reserve technology fund. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, we currently have a fund that's tied to our building permit fees. It's kind of restricted, it's not something that we can use for just anything, it has to be related to technology. What I'd like to do, and then we utilize it for building permit records and things of that nature, I believe that there's a rational nexus between that fee and what we're doing with GIS, because I think this is driven by growth and by, you know, building. And so I think that there's a rational nexus between that fee that we currently charge and being able to use that restricted fund. For the first, I think, 15 years of the town's existence, that fund was not touched. So we had building permit fees, well, I should say 2006 to 2015 probably. We had building permit fees that were generating this technology fund, and it was building up, and we had this reserve. What I'd like to be able to do at some point is, obviously, have an opinion from the attorney. If he says yes, we can do that, utilize that fund to fund any, any technology requirements that we have for this, and also continue to use it for building department technology expenses that we have as well.
So based on what you're saying, we have the money there to start expanding on it, providing, all things being equal, that we're allowed to do that?
Absolutely.
With it, with the funds. So that may solve the current budget, but we, can you get back to us soon on that?
On how much?
No, on that we can do it.
On whether we can use it or not.
It's not my determination.
I don't know, I'm saying from legal...
Yeah, I'm going to have a conversation with Keith, I'll send it to him, you know...
I think Garrett's point is that if that's the case, we can use it now and not have to wait till next year's budget to budget for it.
That's what I'm... I agree, and that's why I put it up there as a discussion point. Yes.
Okay. I like that idea.
Yeah, this is, this is the future, this is, this is how we can keep track of everything. Our entire town gets, you know, templated on this, and all the different layers. And for a resident to have access to this at some future date is phenomenal.
Right.
You know, you can make that add for realtors, or whatever it is, whatever the activity is that's going on in the town, you know, and, you know, it's something new and wonderful for us, but you know, most other towns are, you know, it's a pretty simple thing for them, but you know, we're getting there, we're getting there, so...
Mayor, can I just, let's hear it go right ahead. I recognize a couple people, I wanted to just, I know I mentioned the team earlier, but I really want to recognize the efforts of, especially Mr. Lay, our town engineer who's really been doing kind of the bulk of the attribute tables and plugging in that information, as well as Mr. Solera and Mrs. Zessetti, as far as giving direction and working with us to make sure that we have a good product. So I'd like to thank them.
Absolutely. Well, we never fail, so I want to open up to the public and see if you all want to share some input. Yeah, a couple of things on this. The, this was first brought up, it was sold to the council and to the residents, that staff would be able to handle this all by itself. And staff hasn't changed that much since we put it into effect. We still got the same staff. Now, they can't handle it, they want to add people.
That's not true.
It's not getting done. What's changed, other than let's hire people, let's spend money? The thing was that we were going to put it into effect as people went into the field, every day. And hearing that the app is accurate within 1,000 feet, what the hell app you got? You know, does it print with a lock on your phone? Every phone in here is accurate within 10 or 15 feet, not 1,000 feet. My God, if it's 1,000 feet, we'd be in the ocean before we walked out of town. So I think something's very wrong with the app and needs to be corrected there to get an accurate app. Secondly, we had this conversation at Camp Plan meeting with Mr. McKay when he brought this up, and the problems that we had, and he had the same one with the airport, and it's sad to see the passing of Southwest Ranches International Airport. But, but saying that Michelle Milgram's office, or CAP, or engineering, or somebody misses something, I think we should use our attorney with the one-size hammer, which is about 43-foot across, and that's just the head, not the shank, and we drop it on them. Because if they made the mistake of issuing a permit on something that is already existing as in the town and is already known, because we put a trail along that, and we put it in the comprehensive plan, if they're not reading the documents, and they're not up on the documents, we got a problem, a really big problem. And obviously, after listening to Mayor McKay the other night at the Camp Plan meeting, we have a major problem. And I don't think it should be having to have someone come in and pay for the GIS. I think it is using the attorney's hammer, or their errors and omissions, and nail them once. Because once we pull their errors and omissions, they will go out of business on repeat. All right, you got enough. Thank you.
Russell, can I ask what the short-term space needs are with your servers?
It's a great question. We currently have the GIS server, if I may, I'm sorry, Mayor. I didn't even ask, I apologize.
That's all right.
We have at least 100 gigs of space right now that's available for the GIS. So we think for the foreseeable future, we're okay. What we're trying to anticipate is long-term needs, and identifying a funding source so that we have ample space into the future.
So if I could, you know, I'm in IT, so I'm in the process of upgrading several clients, so something like 900 gig servers or something like that, would that help the city if I was able to donate them?
Listen, I...
Go to Howard, couldn't.
We're upgrading Memorial and Brown Hospital systems, and we're pulling out services that are probably three years old, they're perfectly functioning, and they're virtual, so you could put whatever up in the systems and stuff, and they're probably about 900 gig.
If they're compatible with our current systems, I'm not a hardware specialist, I would talk to our IT people that we utilize in-house, and if that was compatible, I don't see why we wouldn't want to accept that.
On short-term, I mean, that's...
If you would keep in touch with Andy Burns, or, and/or Russell, they'll find out, and anything you can do for us is greatly, greatly appreciated.
It's perfect.
Yeah, listen, if they're pulling those out, they're going to be available, so...
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much for mentioning that.
On the parks board, we've struggled to get these properties with their resements. Michelle Milgram's office knew about it from the start. Doug and I went and looked at this guy building on the airport, right smack dab where it wasn't supposed to be. To me, this, you need to hire these people or this person, and this is a one-time thing. It's like putting in a sidewalk. Once you put the sidewalk in, it's in, you don't need somebody to stand there and maintain the sidewalk. So once they put in the material that they need, and believe me, I barely turn on a computer, so I don't know a whole lot, but I do know if I look at something and I see that it's red, and that's our property, and that's 50 feet, then the building department and the engineer and everybody that's looking at that piece of property sees that red line and knows that that's 50 feet of our property, whether or not it's been dedicated or not. We have a lot of properties in this town that have slipped by, that have not dedicated their property, and they go right to the middle of the road, yet everybody else on the road has dedicated their property. It gets away. They get the building permit, they get it CO'd, so long, goodbye. And so, my feeling is, if the money is there, and it can only be used for specific things, that this is the time when you tap into it, and this isn't a part-time person that will be here forever and ever and ever. Because once they put the material in there that they need, then we don't need them anymore. Now, if you need them to do something else, to layer something else in, then fine, but I think we need to move on this now. A lot of people are building in this town, and I see a lot of stuff that's slipping by, including dedicated drainage canals, and they're gone. The people who built, they've got their CO, and the drainage canal, which was supposed to be dedicated, now dead ends at both ends. You can't tie it in now. So unless we then have to go legally after them. So this is stuff that we need to do, and I sit on the drainage board, I know what we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett.
Hey, Russell, you said you might be looking for like a high school kid or a college kid to come in and part-time help? What are the qualifications, like what do they need and be able to do?
Very geeky.
They have to have a pocket saver.
Shit, they what?
They have to have a pocket saver.
A protractor? And like, what are the hours? Like, when would they, like, what do you need them to do, and when do you need them to do it?
Mayor, if I, we haven't begun to flesh that out.
Oh, okay.
We just wanted to cancel input on this tonight, but if, I mean, if somebody might be interested, just let us know.
Okay. Listen, before you guys leave tonight, get Russell and Andy's cards. I'll give you one of mine too, because it's got my cell on it, but I'd like to keep this on the fast track, guys. Anybody else? Anything else? Any more public comment? See, no more public comment, public comment's closed. Steve, go right ahead.
I'll just say that I do think that as far as the part-time help, that it is, it's not, it's not a requirement, but it's sorely needed, and that's why I think we should move forward with it.
Give school credit hours to...
Yeah, you know, I mean, as far as that, the question as far as, it's not part of it, I mean, we could roll along and let staff do as they've done, they've done an amazing job kind of fitting this in, but the reality is, is there's a lot of value here, and the sooner we can get it into the public's hands, the better it is. So I definitely fully support getting some part-time help in there and speeding up the process.
Yep, yep, I agree with that.
All right. Anything else you guys? Anything else? You good? Anyone else? We're good? All right. Well, we on our agenda here.
Minutes. Nope.
Item 12.
Item 12, Mayor. We're just looking for council consensus because it's, it's that time of year again. It always seems to be that time of year. We're getting ready to kick off the budget planning for fiscal year 19. And so I know Marty has put together the calendar and while we don't need a formal resolution, we're just looking for just council consensus on this, but I can tell that Mr. Sherwood has something that he would like to add to the discussion.
Marty, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Town Administrator Andy Burns. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Tonight is our kickoff for our fiscal year 18, 19 fiscal year, for our budget calendar tonight. We're not getting into any details specifically. The challenge we, we will be facing is numerous, including the debt service for our JABRI removal forthcoming, but that'll all covered in detail. If we refer to our nice color-coordinated calendar, and this, upon your approval tonight, this will be on the website, we'll have it posted by the town clerk. The important items to reference to is our color yellow, which comprises our town staff kickoff at our, our staff meeting on Thursday, February 22nd. We'll be meeting with each of you on a one-on-one basis for extended period of time, give us plenty of policy direction from each of you between March 9th to May 18th. The July 26th date for the yellow, moving down the calendar, you will notice that will be when we are going to have our prelim knowledge and initial fire and sire race assessment adoption. That's our prelim. The books we, we anticipate getting out to you on July 18th and giving you plenty of time, up to two weeks to review for that meeting, they're set to prelim rates. The green, you will notice, and you'll see some TBDs, that's to be determined. Russell and I have confirmed those dates are set, preliminarily set by the Broward County School Board and Broward County Government. It hasn't been ratified yet, but that does impact our hearings in September. And before I move to the September yellow colors, I have our annual workshop, community is invited. That will be on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018 at 7:00 PM with, of course, Mayor, Town Council, and we would hope to get as much community input and anticipation at that time. The process, as you know, gives us plenty of time to meet with your advisory councils as well as you for a number of months before the budget book is prepared. The hearing dates, the official hearing dates, that's always been a challenge for us. The Wednesday, September 12th, Florida statute dictate we cannot hold the first public hearing prior to September 12th or later than September 15th. Our challenge, of course, is September 15th is a Saturday and the Broward County Government has precedence over us, so that takes away the 13th. So our only window, and most municipal governments in Broward have the same situation, is either Wednesday, September 12th and Friday, the 14th. So obviously Wednesday, September 12th is the date we need to designate and enable the clerk to get the notice and our calendar set for that date. And moving to our last, final second public hearing date, Thursday, September 27th, 6:00 PM with, in conjunction with our September regular council member meeting at 7:00 PM. That's all I have, Mayor, to open it up to anyone. If there's any scheduling conflicts, I'd like some input so we can finalize and adopt it tonight. Thank you.
I'll just say that I'm glad that my birthday, September 15th, falls on a Saturday so that I'm safe this year because it's rare that we don't have a budget meeting on that day. So I'm happy.
Looks good, Marty.
I am. They keep coming anyway.
All right. Anybody else have any comments or conflicts or any issues?
Good job, Marty.
Yeah, Mayor, if we could just get a consensus from council to move forward with the calendars.
Do we need a vote for the adoption?
You guys need a motion for anything for this or no?
The formality, may want to go, just go ahead and do that.
I do a roll call.
Okay. Do we have a motion in a second?
Make a motion, we move forward.
Second. Approve the calendar.
Okay. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Yes.
Vice Memphis Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Freddie, we're going to back up a minute. Freddie's got something he wanted to address related to a board member.
We want to appoint him.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we want to appoint Mr. Brown to the.
You want to appoint Mr. Brown on one of the committees? You know about it?
Yeah.
I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, we have, there's a vacancy on the drainage board and it's the vice mayor's appointment. It was Vince Valetta who became an honorary member of that board. So there's a vacancy on the board. It's the vice mayor's appointment and I believe he wanted to appoint Tony Brown, who's here this evening, to that slot on the drainage board. Is that correct, Vice Mayor?
Is that who you wanted?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so everybody in favor?
It's his appointment.
It's his appointment, so it just goes.
Would you want to have him step up so they know who he is?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead and stand up if you would. All right, so we're going to add you to the drainage board. So congrats and appreciate it and thanks for stepping up and getting involved.
Thank you.
We greatly appreciate it. Awesome. Okay. What other issues we got?
You have a set of minutes, Mayor?
Go ahead.
No, for the next meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Anyone out there want to correct our minutes? I know it happens occasionally. Hasn't happened in a while. No corrections of our minutes? Okay, great. Go back here, call a question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Awesome.
Motion to adjourn.
Accept it.
Thank you to everyone for coming out. Greatly appreciate it.